This is the running jam.
Oh yeah, that clocks fast.
Oh yeah.
Oh yeah, like what, four minutes?
Can you get on that?
Seven oh one I got.
Good, good evening, everybody. The Newton Planning Board would like to hold a public meeting on June 11th, 2024, at the Newton Town Hall, beginning at real time, 7:02 PM. First, I would like to salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. So we have Ms. Barbara White on Zoom. So we are good to go. We're going to reorder the agenda tonight, so you guys don't have to sit here and listen to, unless you want, you're welcome to stay, but in the interest of your time, we're going to move Agenda Number A to C, and then move B to A and C to B, if that makes sense. So the first order of business tonight is Stevens Silva requested a public hearing for a non-retail home-based business. Sure. Jamie, can you turn us up too, please?
Mr. Chair, this is Barbara. Sorry. I need to recuse myself for this agenda item, Mr. Silva, because I'm in a butter.
Okay.
But we have no, we have no problems with what he wants to do.
Thank you. Is this loud enough for you? I'm a little bit amplified now. Is that better? I can talk louder.
I heard that.
How about that? Okay. Is that better?
That's much better.
Perfect. Stevens Silva requested a public hearing for a non-retail home-based business towing at 26 Bear Hill Road, Newton, New Hampshire. The property is referenced as Tax Map 17, Block 4, Lot 1. And as Mrs. White indicated, she has to reclusive herself because she is a direct abutter. So if you would like to come up there, sure, you could come to this end.
No, I'm sorry.
Yep, yep. Jen, do you have any comments on this?
Nope. The application appears complete. I think just confirming a couple of things when we get into it, but beyond that, I don't have any other comments.
Okay. And if you could just give a brief overview of what your proposed home-based business is?
So basically, it's just a tow company. The residence is just a place to park the vehicle. Going to be towing salvage for a company called Copart. That's pretty much it.
Just for the record, could you state your name and your address?
Oh, I apologize. Stevens Silva.
So you're not planning to bring any of the vehicles home with you?
No, no.
It's just...
Nothing's bringing, nothing's being brought to the property. It's, it's just a place to park the vehicle for now.
Okay.
Eventually, I'd like to get a garage somewhere, commercial property somewhere, and go from there.
Jen?
Just a couple of small questions. So you're not going to have any cars coming to your property, other than the towing, the tow truck? Are you going to be doing any repairs on your tow truck up onsite or on your, at your residence?
Repairs to the tow truck?
Yeah.
I don't believe so. I mean, just maybe basic, like cleaning. That's about it.
Okay. That was all I had.
So you'd go for, for, for a company and go and move a car for them from one point to another?
From one point to another, yeah.
It wouldn't come back to your house or something like that? Or get offloaded or shit there or?
No, no. It's just a place to park it until I, hopefully it works out and I can find a commercial spot. And I'd like to get into like a fleet maintenance thing, doing fleet maintenance repair.
Yeah, and part of, and one of the things you said that roadside and maybe some roadside repairs, and that's on the site, if you can get it up and running from where they can drive, where you wouldn't have to tow it. Otherwise, you put it on the hook and tow it to the garage.
Yeah, that's, that's eventually.
Yes.
One other question. The vehicle, your tow truck is under 26,000 gross vehicle weight?
Yes, yep.
Six wheel on the sumy?
Uh, yes. It's, uh, it's GBW on it, I think, is 22 or 2300 pounds.
Yeah.
Thousand pounds. 23, yeah, thousand.
Do you have the hydraulic on the back?
It does have a hydraulic system on the back. Yep, yep. Has a wheel lift.
And your hours of operation are, just for the record, what is?
Would be eight to five.
Eight to five?
Yeah.
Jen?
Yeah, the only thing is that if, are you would only be leaving with your truck between the hours of eight and five?
Correct.
So because it, if for some reason there was a need for you to have, say, slightly larger hours than that, this is the time to ask for that? Because if you are outside of the hours you're approved for, you'd have to come back.
Gotcha.
If there's the reasonable possibility that a 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, something like that?
Yeah, there is a reasonable possibility that that could be.
Or even like a 6:00 AM to whatever.
Yeah.
And you probably, so let's discuss the hours. So six o'clock, so if you're towing, you're hooking it, and you're bringing them to businesses. So my next question would be, you would have to be bringing these vehicles to these places of business during their operational hours?
Correct.
Not after hours? So it's not like you get a call at nine, 10 o'clock at night? You go out, hook up, tow it, and then bring it out to their place?
The, so the only thing is, is once I am able to do the roadside service and stuff, that may be a case where it may be after hours.
Outside the hours of seven to seven?
Correct.
Or within those hours, no?
Outside of those hours.
So if we said, for right now, if we approved this, and we did say like 6:00 AM Monday, Monday through Saturday, 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM?
That would work, yeah.
Would work for you?
Yeah, yeah. That would help me get up and running to the point where I could get to where I want to be.
And then, once that kicks in, you'd also be looking for that other place too?
I'd be looking for another location, correct?
Yep. So that being said, are you still okay with 8:00 AM to noon on Saturdays?
On Saturdays?
That's what's written in here, that's all. Yeah. Now, I would, I would change those.
I would want to change that, too.
Yeah, this is the time.
Yep.
Saturdays, I would do the same thing.
Same hours, yep.
Six. Six, six to nine?
Yeah.
We would put it in for Monday through Saturday? Basically, yeah.
Correct, yep.
Nothing on Sunday?
Uh, not typically, not typically.
Anybody got anything else?
The only real big thing is just in a, it's in the recommended conditions is that there can't be any vehicles being brought to the site. There can't be any waste disposal being brought to the site. So that would just be a recommendation, is the condition.
Well, with that being said, and nobody with any other questions?
We, you still have to take jurisdiction.
You still have to have a, take jurisdiction. You still have to do the public comment section, so.
Right. I'm going to move that we take jurisdiction on it. Second.
Did you get that, Jen?
Yep. Sorry, I was on the wrong sheet.
No.
Who seconded?
Jim. Jim.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Eddie?
Barbara's refused from this one.
Oh, yeah.
Barbara is refused from this.
Oh.
I apologize.
Thank you, sorry.
It's okay. Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Mr. Papacristus?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Is there any comments or questions from the public? Do we, we did get a letter from the abutter. And I believe the applicant has addressed most of their concerns. Their main concerns were in regards to, and I'm going to kind of summarize this, about the inherent nature of towing and bringing vehicles back. And you've indicated that you're not, this is basically a place to store your work vehicle. Yep. So I think you addressed those concerns as well as some of the times of, you know, and then having people come to your house. But you don't intend to have people coming to the house. And you're aware that if you have, if you want to work outside the hours that you just indicated, you would have to come back in front of the board for review and potential approval or denial. So if, you know, hopefully, maybe we'll see you again when you get further down the road. No pun intended. But just, just so you're aware, so you know... Sorry. Just so you're aware, if, you know, if you start working outside of those hours, you shouldn't, but there could be a code enforcement issue, but, so.
If it comes to the point where I need more hours, I'll come back and go from there.
Did I get everything in his letter? I believe I did. Yep?
I think that summarized the main concerns.
Well, there being no other questions, and nobody has anything else to put forth, I move that the board found the following concerning the application meets the plans, that the plan falls within the scope of the applicable zoning and site plan regulations for home-based business, and that justice would be served by approving the application. And that the application should be approved with the conditional uses as follows. You need to obtain all local and state land use permits, including but not limited to life safety inspection, condition and subsequent, no outdoor storage of business-related materials. You know, if you, that means when we discussed working on your vehicle, extra tires, all that other stuff. If you had them, you could store them in your garage or whatever. No bringing back cars from the road or vehicle parts, so that they're not being stored on your property. All business shall take place either inside the home, your home office, or what have you, or off-site, like we're planning on doing with all the vehicles. Your hours of operation shall be from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM, Monday through Saturday. And only your tow truck and family-owned vehicles may be parked on the property. Any other vehicles may be stored off-site, as we alluded to. Or if you have somebody that is going to fill in for you if you're on vacation, they can come to your house, park their private vehicle there, and then take your tow truck and use it, if need be.
Just one small suggestion of amendment, that only the tow truck and personal vehicles may be parked on the property? Not just family-owned vehicles? It shouldn't just be personal vehicles? You're allowed to have guests park at your house, I guess, is the...
Oh, true.
Yeah.
Good catch. So family and person?
Was there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Eddie?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Mr. Papacristus?
Aye.
And Mr. Moran?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
So you will be sent your paperwork in about a week-ish. That's it?
Good luck with your business.
The next item on the agenda is Stanley and Tony Soslowitz. Soslowitz. That of Newton, New Hampshire requests a public hearing for an auxiliary dwelling unit over a garage at 6 Hunter's Way, Newton, New Hampshire. Property is referenced as Tax Map 8, Block 2, Lot 1724. Jen, do you have any?
The application appears complete and conform with your ZO ordinance.
You ready?
Aye. No, you're making it very...
Say your name.
Oh, Tony Soslowitz.
So we know how to pronounce it.
Soslowitz.
So you're looking to build or repurpose a area above the garage that is 798 square feet?
Yes.
To an accessory dwelling unit? The maximum unit size is 800. That's why I'm mentioning that. I just did the math.
Yeah. So I mean, that was like tentative. I have an architect actually working on it, so we know that the max is 800, yeah. Yeah.
Barbara, do you have any questions? You're muted if you said no. Not hearing none. Does anybody from the board have any questions?
Negative.
Nope. Pretty straightforward.
Okay. It's attached to the house. It's going to have a motion to take jurisdiction.
Actually, one moment. So the numbers are over 800 according to this, so you know?
I think you're counting the exterior gap.
Or the footends or whatever. I don't, I don't...
Oh, it's here?
Yeah, it comes to Dreschai of 800 square feet.
Oh, this is, this is bedroom?
Yeah, it's 13 and 6.
Oh. So this is not the footprint right here?
Is, the footprint can be larger. It's the livable area, correct?
The livable area, so like the shared stairway, wood count.
So mine is 6'12", yeah, yeah.
Gotcha.
It's just what is truly the apartment.
Okay, yeah, you got it.
Which is a very, it's a very, clearly what it is.
I tried to do my homework.
I will say, otherwise, it appears it meets all of the criteria for your ADU ordinance, you know, with the condition of things like building permit, septic systematic. We see all those typical things that can come after an approval process. It meets the rest of the criteria.
So the request or motion for jurisdiction still stands?
I'll make a motion to take jurisdiction. Second.
Who is the second? Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Eddie?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Mr. Papacristus?
Aye.
And Mr. Moran?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Any discussion or comments from the public? Sure. You, you have to get up to the mic and say your name as well.
Patty Barkus, abutter with the property. I think our only concern was to make sure they're within there, because we don't know, haven't seen the plans, if they're within our, the right variances or whatever you call it, and not, any exceptions being made, because they do own quite a bit of property over there. Just make sure it's on theirs and not going into ours. That was the only thing we were concerned with. Other than that, we have no other concerns about being built.
Okay. We can absolutely make that a stip, we can make that a stipulation. It's somewhat a boilerplate language, but that the unit has to meet all setback requirements as defined in our setback ordinances or regulations.
Yep, so they're only allowed to build the accessory apartment within the guidelines of meeting all of the regular setbacks, as if it were just an addition onto the house that they could build. So it, it won't intrude into your property further than they would be allowed to build an addition under their home versus an accessory dwelling.
Okay. Did you have any other questions?
No.
Okay.
Yep. Well, thank you very much.
So do we have a motion?
So I will make a motion that the board would serve, it would serve justice to approve the application, that this plan falls within the scope of the applicable zoning and site plan regulations. Let's see. Conditions ongoing. Limits of the accessory apartments are as follows.
You can just cite these zoning ordinance. You don't necessarily need all of it. You don't have to.
That it needs to fall, follow pursuant to RSA 674:71, 674:73. And the property, of course, must be occupied by the homeowner of one of the two units. No more than two bedrooms are permitted in the accessory apartment. No more than four shall occupy said apartment. Off-street parking. Minimum of four vehicles, septic system, as we discussed, needs to be able to... accommodate, thank you, the, the entire unit. The accessory apartment must be attached to the primary dwelling unit. The accessory apartment shall have convenient direct access to the primary dwelling unit plus its own separate entrance or exit. A parent shall remain that of a single-family residence. Due entrances for the accessory shall be located on the side or rear of the building. So as we discussed before, that even means, can be to the front, but towards the side. A parents shall remain that of a single-family residence. The size of the accessory apartment shall be a maximum of 800 square feet, as we discussed. The primary dwelling unit, the accessory apartment shall share common utilities, including the well, septic system, heating, and electrical services. The design of the accessory apartment shall be such that it should be readily adaptable to conversion into part of the primary dwelling unit, if need be. And that it meets all life safety codes.
I will say that Dennis Quintel has already submitted a septic plan to the state, too, for me, so that should be all set.
Okay.
Okay.
Jump the gun?
Second.
Mr. Eddie seconded it.
Thank you. Any more questions or not?
I have no further questions.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Eddie?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Mr. Papacristus?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
That was unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night. You don't want to stay for the housing chapter?
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have, that's why I wanted to do it first, so we would be able to have a captive audience. Correct, but not next to you.
I'll be away. Always a good night. Just so you know.
Take care, have a good night. Thank you for coming.
Jen, for the Rockingham Planning Commission, I'd like to present the housing chapter for the Newton Master Plan. This is our first public hearing. And we have a lot of people in the audience.
Stunning. Get more cheers.
So be it as it may that we do not have a large audience. You guys have heard a lot about housing from me. We've heard a fair bit from residents of Newton about housing through a couple of the different surveys we've done. We did a survey last fall to get feedback specifically on housing and sort of what the future of housing that may, people may want, may desire in Newton. So between the updated data, some background information, and state laws that are on the books, we have worked to update the housing master plan chapter to also coincide with the master plan work you've been doing in the past couple of years, including the overall vision statement. I realize I'm talking to the board that has been through all of this quite a bit, so I'll keep it brief. But the basic intent with the housing master plan chapter is to guide municipality to meet the needs and desires of existing residents and future residents while also being in conformance with state law, because there is a lot of emphasis on housing through Concord these days. So this work was paid for via a grant that did not cost any Newton taxpayer dollars. It is through the Invest New Hampshire grant. And one of the main outreach, I'm sorry, one of the main goals of the grant was to develop this master plan chapter. The short story with the housing data that has come out is that there is simply not enough housing to meet the demand, specifically housing that is of, I would say, a more moderate income level. There is not a lot of vacancy rates for rentals or even homes available for purchase. So part of the discussion of all of this is how do you increase housing diversity while also meeting the needs of the residents and complying with the state law? Got a lot of data in here. I'm not going to go through it. But basically, the pace of what houses cost in Newton is going faster than what the average income level is. One of the key state laws that is, that Newton is subject to, like every other municipality, is that it has to provide reasonable and realistic opportunity for the development of workforce housing. Workforce housing is generally meant to be of a moderate income level. It is not necessarily Section 8 or low-income housing, although that does fall into workforce. In order to comply with that law, Newton has to either prove that it has sufficient housing stock that meets that workforce affordability threshold, which the purchase price in this area for a home is $407,000. I think it would be difficult to find many houses in Newton these days that are going for that price, let alone rentals that are below a threshold for a two-bedroom of about $1,500 per month for rental. So because of that, my office who develops the regional housing needs assessment does put together estimated numbers that do not take into account the availability of infrastructure or land or constraints of wetlands or floodplains to identify the number of housing units that may be needed in the next 25 years, including the affordable units needed versus just market rate. Newton's need, and this is based on projections, is 288 units by 2040. That does not include anything that has been approved. This planning board in the past year has actually approved a 44-unit apartment complex that would help get to that number. Of the afford, of that 288, 103 would have to be considered affordable, so really below that threshold, which currently is a purchase price of $407,000 for a home or $1,550 for a two-bedroom apartment for rent. So we did do an evaluation as to what were the past housing goals for Newton from the 1999 housing chapter, which is really your most recent housing chapter. There was a goal... There was a goal of actually providing more multifamily housing opportunities. Newton has an interesting mix of housing in that you are predominantly single-family homes, but you do have a fair number of older homes that do have two or more units in them. So you have a decent amount of multifamily. You also have some permissive duplex that are allowed in town, which is a little bit different than some of the neighboring communities.
I have a question, so just going back to 29% of rental units needed, so we're short 30% of rental units.
So in, across all of New Hampshire, but particularly in southern New Hampshire and the smaller towns of which Newton would fall into, there are simply not a lot of rentals. The majority of the homes are owner-occupied. So, and rentals can be whole homes, they can be apartments or condos. The number that's in that table on page four is really the split of that number. The idea is to have about 30% be rental units and 71% be owner-occupied units, to get a better balance of owner-occupied versus rental, just because rental allows a little bit more flexibility for people coming into a community or moving around or changing as their lifestyle and they change. So that's what that 29% is based off of. In 2021, when you guys updated your overall master plan vision statement, you do talk about a goal that specifically says, execute formal review of zoning in order to protect Newton's water and natural resources. The reason I want to really pull that out is because that's usually the biggest constraint with rural municipalities, is the ability to provide adequate water and septic capacity, because you don't have any public water or sewer in Newton. That's typically the biggest development constraint, and I don't say that as a bad thing. It is a good thing to protect those natural resources, but also thinking about where you can potentially consider more housing diversity or density allowances where it can be accommodated. You do have also in your 2003 land use chapter update, a recommendation that says, "The town, as part of the housing master plan update, should consider the need to modify zoning to better allow for diverse housing stock to meet the needs of all residents, while ensuring overall land use goals of Newton are also met." That sort of gets to that balancing a lot of needs, which is natural resources, municipal tax-based, and having that diversity of an asset, while also having the opportunity for some housing development. It doesn't mean that there has to be a lot of housing development everywhere. It's providing that opportunity. One thing I had to stress a lot with a lot of towns is planning boards don't build anything. The town is not going to build anything. It is ultimately the market that will do it, but the planning board does help to bring to voters potential rule changes that can allow for different housing options. So based on all of that, we did have discussion about what some of the current, the potential housing goals could be for going forward. The first one was to support a variety of residential housing options to accommodate all generations, income levels, and household structures, including housing for fostering age-in-place. That largely came out of the age-friendly work that my office did through a different grant project, where we did look to see how people would be able to continue to reside in Newton as they got older. Like many towns, Newton is getting a little bit grayer. You have a little bit more age-restricted housing than many of your neighboring communities, which does help to foster that goal, but making sure that there are also additional phases for people to come in and come out as they move through their life phases.
Could you, so underneath the age-friendly communities assessment, what is this there saying about elderly property tax exemption program?
Elderly property tax exemptions are really aimed at allowing elderly residents that are lower income to have property tax exemptions. There are things that the town can do to expand that program, but it is really up to the municipality. Effectively, if you reduce the taxes based on whatever income level you're seeking to, you are reducing the overall tax base of the town. So that has to be balanced between the services the town needs versus being able to accommodate people as they age in place, and maybe their income level is going down as their property tax is going up because property values have gone up so much in the past.
So is that a proposed pot, or is that already happening?
That is just a recommendation that came out of that assessment.
Oh, okay, okay. Proposed, yep.
That is not explicitly one of the housing goals, other than it is a potential action that could be looked into farther. That is really not a planning board function, to be honest. It's more of a select board function.
I understand that.
Moving on, goal two is conduct additional outreach with housing. That can be specific to zoning changes that we discussed when we went through the regulatory audit, especially those that are really feasible. Those can be things as much as considering accessory dwelling unit changes. Maybe we go bigger than 800 square feet. Maybe we talk about whether detached accessory dwellings should be allowed in some places on some parcels. Some towns are moving in that direction. It doesn't have to be a universal allowance. You still want to accommodate things like adequate septic and parking. Number three is to guide housing development so that it will not overburden the drinking water supply or put undue strain on the town's natural resources. Again, because all of the drinking water in the town comes from groundwater, you do have a couple of public water systems, but they are smaller community systems. You don't have any municipal water system, and you're honestly unlikely to have one in the near future, so really making sure that you're not compromising those water resources. This is particular to housing, but that can be a more universal.
How do other communities help mold, regulate, guide responsible development for, like that, for, like, adequate water septic?
So for, there's a couple of ways of doing it. You obviously are going to have to still deal with, where you have to always deal with septic because you have no sewer, getting state permitting. So some towns that only allow larger acre parcels, three, four, or five-acre parcels, you can typically fit a septic system on something that large, no matter what the soils. Newton's lot sizing is soil-based, largely in response to its ability of the soils to accommodate a septic system. So there are ways of changing that so that you are allowing a little bit more density that can still accommodate those, especially more advanced systems. Your soil-based lot sizing is starting to become a little antiquated as far as the technology. It doesn't, it doesn't mean it's wrong. It's still going to accommodate septic systems. So that is one way. Also, simply allowing a little bit more density in some places. You allow duplexes, for example, in parts of town. You might want to consider the feasibility of allowing duplexes other places, because that constraint is really bedrooms. So right now, you allow single-family homes almost everywhere in town. Doesn't matter the lot size. The single-family home can be 10,000 square feet. The septic system has to accommodate the, I'm going to say, eight bedrooms in that 10,000-square-foot home. Well, if you're allowing duplexes, but you limit the bedroom size to, say, six bedrooms or to a duplex that each unit has three bedrooms, it's still the same septic loading, plus a little because of kitchen, but you're getting more housing units. So that, so it's sort of balancing that, what's the intensity of the use? As far as protecting water resources in general, groundwater, it's really, residential uses are not the primary driver typically of groundwater pollution. It's going to be more of your industrial, commercial, and general stormwater management than residential uses. And maintaining septic systems are also a really important way of maintaining water quality, both surface and groundwater. But that, that's a whole other discussion that gets beyond the zoning itself.
Okay.
Sorry, that was kind of a long one to do.
No, that, 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 address the comments. So there's very easy ways to allow increased density that do not negatively impact the watershed and everything else. Jamie, can you turn us down now, please? I'd like whisper.
One other thing that does really specifically get at housing development while protecting natural resources generally is cluster or conservation subdivisions, where you take, if you could typically build 10 houses, while you're allowing them to be built on smaller lots so that you're maintaining the open space. You guys have had a couple of those in the past few years. That really gets to some of that protecting the water resources, maintaining the open space while getting the housing. Also, things like community septic systems tend to work really well, and one of the reasons for that is that because you have to have a homeowners' association, you have maintenance being done on those homeowners', those septic systems. You have routine inspections because it's a group of people that are invested. It's not just an individual homeowner, who sometimes people don't always understand what they're supposed to do with a septic system. Moving down, so goal four. This is really in response to some of the conflicts that Newton, I think, has historically had when they've had different uses between residential uses and commercial uses, sort of butting up against each other, but to guide new housing to those areas that are most suitable for residential development in order to minimize conflict with commercial, recreational, and conservation areas. The recreational and conservation areas, I think, is less of the concern. It's really that commercial-residential interface. A lot of your commercial zones, when they were first established, were sort of, I don't want to say shoehorned in, but they were established in places that had no development. They were the last places in town where there wasn't much residential use. So doesn't it make sense to have it be commercial-industrial? They had access to state roads. Well, since those zones were established, the residential zones around them have largely been developed. So you're starting to get that conflict because some of the commercial hasn't been as fast to develop as some of the residential. So that's, that's the intention of that goal. Number five is foster a sense of community and connectivity in residential neighborhoods through thoughtful site design and the provisions for safe walking routes and enforcement of speed limits. That really comes as you're getting more housing development. People want to recreate. They want to have that connection. It's that sense of place that really helps to make it feasible for a community, but you also want it to be safe. So that can get to a lot of different things, but that was sort of what came out from the survey of really big concerns. And then number six is to continue to enforce existing town regulations related to junkyards, unregistered vehicles, and building codes, and encourage the continuing maintenance and upkeep of Newton's housing stock. Basically, aesthetics are important to people, but they also don't like being overly regulated. So your existing regulations, you've had discussion of junkyards and issues where places are being not used according to your regulations, where it causes people to have concerns about those properties. But they also don't necessarily want the town coming in and telling them that their grass has to be cut to a certain length, and they can only paint their houses certain colors. So I think it's really balancing those two strains that we heard through a lot of the different surveys and feedback that we've gotten from some of the regulations that have been proposed over the years. Goal seven is really, review these goals periodically and make necessary changes as we get more information, if the housing market takes a wild turn, or if some of the state laws actually change. Some of the laws that we were following that were in Concord this year have actually not come to fruition. Whether folks agreed with them or not, they simply haven't gotten to the governor. There are a couple that are coming through that we'll need to talk about once they, if they do get signed by the governor, which many of them likely are, because they will impact sort of items that Newton is able to approve or not. But those are the goals. I can go through the outreach if you'd like me to, but it's the results of the summary of the survey that we've been through a couple of times that has been up on the website and was emailed out to everybody who took it last fall with the full summary of reports. I have attached that in Appendix B. Appendix A is a deep dive into a lot of data that is just there if you need to reference it, but I didn't want to overwhelm the document with it.
Can I make one request?
Sure.
I think it would be beneficial to add percentages to some of these numbers. And if it's in Excel, it's easy. If it's not, I feel bad.
It is in Excel.
Oh, okay. Just like, I was just looking at like, change like school enrollment. I was like, wow, that's like a more than 10% decrease. Then I just did the math. It's like a 14% decrease, 13.89 or 9.8.
I was actually surprised by some of the numbers on that.
Yeah, overall, school enrollment is going down in New Hampshire, and that's directly correlated to the fact that we are having smaller household sizes because people are having fewer children. Our population is getting older, so therefore, children are simply aging out. It's not unusual. It's kind of following the typical pattern of.
That was just one I thought of as, oh, that's a percentage would be nice there. I'm sure there's other ones that.
Yeah, I can certainly have myself go in and change what's applicable to percentages if that's easier for folks to read.
That was just me being, like, my accounting hat on, but.
Just make it very clear.
Pretty good, though. There's a comma on this thing in the first population one, though.
There is, and then, you know what? I think you pointed that out to me last time, and I didn't fix it, so I apologize on that.
Nobody died. It's okay.
So if folks are content with this, we can make, that can be, those small changes can be part of an approval, and then it can be the adopted master plan chapter that goes on your website. And then we can start seeing where implementation can actually occur. That would be the next phase of this document.
I'm about to ask a question, but I'm not sure, I might ask a dumb question. I'm looking at the families with children below the poverty level. Negative 47.
Page?
10. Oh, wait. Yeah, that should not.
Families with children below the poverty level. That, in fact, is negative. So one of the basis of a lot of this data is the American Community Survey data, which is census data, but it's census data that's taken every three months through random selection in a broad geographic area. What that translates to for Newton, because a lot of this data, this is the best available, is through American Community Survey or US Census data, which just is population and household. The numbers can be unrealistic because of the very small sample size, so the margin of error actually becomes greater than the number itself. In this case, for families with children below the poverty level, it's saying you have negative 47 families that are, that have children that are below the poverty level.
So we're offsetting, based on our sample size, other areas of Rockingham County?
It's not even Rock, it's the greater Boston area.
Okay.
Boom. So the American Community Survey data in Boston is fantastic. Southern New Hampshire, not great. I'm happy to take stuff out if you would like.
Maybe z.
I'm a little reluctant to zero it out.
Zero's not the right answer either.
That is not the number that if someone goes to look it up, that they will find.
And not applicable is not, like, undetermined?
Could you put an asterisk in there somewhere and just kind of call out the fact that this is a sample size of this area?
Recite it based on available data.
I will say about half of your data will get pulled if I do that. As a compromise and just suggestion, if you look down where it has like, families with children below the poverty level, you'll see that 2010 number just has a dash. That's because it wasn't collected in 2010. We can simply have that column for Newton, which is the gold column, have dash, 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 if it's too confusing.
I, now that you explained it, I totally understand where it came from. And I'm guessing the five, six, seven of us here understand, but the 14 people that read this. the five, six, seven of us here understand, but the 14 people that read this, and everybody that's going to watch this on YouTube tomorrow, they'll know too, but I don't know what the correct answer is.
Well, just let it ride.
I'd leave it, actually. It's the best data that we have available.
If they want to pursue...
Somebody looking into this should understand the fact that here's where the sample size came from.
Sure.
I will say, all of the data is referenced via...
I'm sure it is.
The opening table, so you can get to it. I will say, most of the numbers that kind of get, the margin of error is bigger than the number for Newton, is likely not to sway any decision you're going to make about housing.
No. And if anybody's going to dive that deep...
Probably the only person that is.
Unless you wanted to do a footnote at the bottom of the whole thing that said, addressed any...
I mean, if you guys would like me to, I'm happy to add that in.
No. Let it ride.
It's great. It's perfect.
We already have citations.
Excellent job.
Is this in MLA format?
It is not. You will need a motion to adopt if you guys are...
With those...
With those couple of changes.
Motion stated.
Second.
Mr. Marshon, move. Mr. Eddy, second.
Eddy.
You ready for the vote? Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Eddy?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Marshon?
Aye.
Mr. Papa Christus?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Okay. Now, on to some board business. First item is accepting, acceptance of the meeting minutes for May 28th.
Motion to accept, second.
Bob made the motion. Jim seconded it. Any discussion?
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Eddy?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Marshon?
Aye.
Mr. Papa Christus?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Next is the NEPA manifest for $748.84. I just have one question, because I'm curious. The fee for north of Boston, this, based on the applicant, changed? Is that because of the length of the text?
The cost for the north of Boston, one ad was $277, I believe, or $279. That was divided by three people, and one for $240 was divided by two.
Okay. I was just curious.
Even dividing it, I mean, it used to be if you had three people on a Carriagertown news, they each paid like 50 bucks. The prices. So, if you contact your state reps or whoever we have for state reps in the fall, maybe they will do away with the newspaper advertising requirement because the prices are just, I mean...
Big astronomical.
If it's a large project, like a light industrial development project, they have budgets that are large enough. But where, you know, the legislator, legislature is saddling the applicants that were here tonight, each one of them had to pay $120 for, towards the newspaper ads, because there's nothing less expensive.
Which is ridiculous.
I will say specifically to home-based businesses and accessory dwellings, there are administrative tweaks that we could make to your zoning, and some of it might be not requiring, under certain conditions, that they even come to the planning board, which means they don't have to have a notice public hearing.
That would be nice.
That we could consider making those tweaks this summer and fall.
Yeah, we were talking about that before, I believe, that came up.
Yep.
And I thought that was a good idea.
I mean, I think it might reduce some of the smaller applications that you guys get and make it less, slightly less costly for folks coming.
Motion to approve the NEPA manifest, second.
Aye.
Mr. Eddy?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Marshon?
Aye.
Mr. Papa Christus?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye. Next is the Invest New Hampshire Housing Grants, round two.
So, the grant source that paid for the master plan chapter, the survey, the land use audit is having another round of grants. They are due on September 30th. Again, it is a no-match requirement grant, so it only costs town volunteers their time and a little bit of gym's time potentially, although you can recoup some administrative costs. The, we can do more planning, although you guys have really fulfilled the two main components of the planning phase of this grant. The third phase is doing implementation. So, doing potential tweaks to zoning and/or site plan and subdivision regulations. It can be a host of smaller things, tweaks to accessory dwellings, consideration of duplexes or multifamily in other parts of town, things that are sort of small adjustments to very big adjustments. That can be doing things like adopting an inclusionary housing ordinance where you would allow someone to build a little more dense if they would have 10% or 20%, or potentially more of that housing development, be income restricted, so it would continue to stay as affordable housing. That is a much bigger project than allowing duplexes in more places in town. So, the grant is able to go for basically two zoning cycles. So, you could do small things for March 2025, potentially, because we would get the funding in October. And then, you can do potentially something larger for March 2026, because the grant goes through summer of 2026.
So, the end deliverable would be five suggested warrant articles to cha... I'm just...
Potentially, yes. It could, it could simply, if you, if the planning board had thoughts on, let's make some adjustments to the accessory dwelling regulations and one or two other small things, we could apply for a couple thousand dollars worth of grant funds for some technical assistance, so it's not falling on the town for me to help work with you. If you want to do something bigger, we can apply for something bigger. It doesn't have to be super defined, but we have to have some idea. And the land use audit really helps to narrow that down a little bit, so we can have more conversations this summer.
When do you need to, when do we need to commit by?
I would really need to know if you guys wanted to move forward, basically by about September 1st, so I would have time to write the grant. So, there is certainly a couple of months to think about it.
Well, I would definitely say, at this point, that we should definitely write and go after the grant, because we've already talked about it, that where we should talk about changing the accessory dwelling units and then look at some of the other stuff.
I will say, I would like you to, I'd like to have a deeper dive conversation on that workforce or inclusionary housing ordinance specifically, because simply having that on the books automatically makes you in compliance with the state law.
Having it on the books, but not necessarily as a right or a by, by right, blanking on the term.
By having it be an ordinance that someone can utilize, you are automatically providing that opportunity for the development of workforce housing, which means you're in compliance with the law. It also means that someone couldn't come in and propose a large workforce housing development that doesn't meet the requirements and restrictions that you have or may have in the future, that the town has voted on, because you're out of compliance. It's a builder's remedy, is sort of the way that gets described. So, a judge can overturn your own local zoning because you don't meet that workforce housing requirement.
Okay. So, somebody, if they decided they wanted to more or less push it through?
Exactly.
Yes.
And have it in front of us regardless?
Yes.
If we don't have the ordinance.
Correct. And outside of basic health and safety, you may not get the setbacks and the vegetative buffers and that sort of aesthetic things that are in some of your design requirements.
So, by having it on the books, it protects the community. It allows us to actually proactively consider where we want that.
Correct, and to guide what it would look like.
If we want 200-foot setbacks or 100-foot no-disturbed vegetative buffer, or the other way, they could be like, no, we're only giving you 50.
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, that's kind of the extreme stick, but yes.
So, that's a no-brainer.
I will say, they are sometimes challenging ordinances to put through to voters who may not like the idea of workforce housing in their community. Logically, it comes from a lack of understanding, not lack of caring. So, it does take a lot more education and outreach, which can be written into the grant, but it will likely be a little bit more of a hot-button issue for the planning board to put forth. So, it's not something to undertake lightly. It will be an involved process.
Okay. So, that would be if there was some minor items for like, accessory dwelling units, and I have no idea what, allowing, I'm just saying, two on a property. I know that's kind of weird, but that would be something you would do like, year one?
Most likely, yeah.
Would be, say that again?
Smaller items, detached accessory dwelling units.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Having accessory dwelling units larger than 800 square feet, 1,000 square feet.
Now, what about what we had talked about, not opening it up for a public hearing, and we do, would that be?
Yeah, that was, so, changing the administrative component certainly could fall under that. It would be, you could write it so you have potentially the exact same criteria you have right now.
Just not...
But instead of a conditional use permit, it just becomes a building permit, as long as the criteria is met, and then the building department can issue it.
Like 800, if it's less than 800 square feet, building permit. If it's greater than 800 square feet, conditional use permit, something like...
Potentially, you could do it that way. There's a lot, there's a lot of possibilities, but...
So, yeah, because as far as I know, for the last five years, we have gotten denied an accessory dwelling unit if it fits the criteria.
I know that there have been a number, and I think Jim can confirm this, of questions of, can I have a detached accessory dwelling? Can I do something bigger? Can, you know, just different situations, because different lots and people's needs are different. The nice thing with accessory dwellings is that they, all of the cost is really borne on the individual property owner. So, the septic, you're not bringing in more infrastructure. It's, that cost is really realized by the homeowner. You know, there is potentially, if everybody had an accessory dwelling, that can change the characteristic of a neighborhood. It is very unlikely that every house in every neighborhood is going to have an accessory dwelling. So...
Okay.
So, those are kind of the grant parameters. As I said, I think we should have a deeper dive of a discussion.
Are both due at the same ti... Do you need to apply for round two and round three at the same time?
If we were going to do sort of, also like, two rounds of zoning changes, it would just be one application.
Okay. So, we have to kind of have that discussion sooner rather than later, where we want to go with this?
We need to have a general idea of what zoning ordinances we may want to tackle.
Okay.
The exact detail of what we are going to change does not have to be part of the grant.
Okay. I mean, I'm just taking everybody's pulse right now. It seems like accessory dwelling units are something we want to look at. The other larger items is something we should consider. But, okay.
Seems like a high-compliance, low-impact solution.
Yep. But it seems like it's going to be a significant amount of outreach and education.
Depending on where we might want to go, yes.
And that can be based on tax maps that are currently developed. We could just pick Map One. I have no idea what Map One is, but...
It's mine, though.
That's his map.
I will say, there are some tweaks to your zoning I would like to make that simply are functional changes that do reflect your tax map and how it is cited in your zoning, but that is not necessarily something that would fall under this grant. They are small tweaks, though, I think, that we should make regardless of this grant.
Like the vehicle weights and stuff like that?
Actually, just more functionally, the way your zoning is described is that it's in Appendix A of your zoning, has the map and lot number, depends on what zoning district you are in. There's a few caveats with distance, but there are lot line adjustments that happen, and there's nothing that reflects the, is it the tax map that was adopted in, I think that 2011 was when that Appendix A with, you know, lot 27, 8, and 27, 9 are commercial industrial. Well, if that lot configuration changes, it's just based on the map and lot number. It doesn't reflect any point in time as to where those boundaries are. So, your zoning boundaries are not well-defined. So, there are some things like that that are structural, and have, we've been lucky that they haven't come up as issues, but they are going to at some point.
And it's been 15 years, almost.
I think, I think it's about 2011 is when that happened, but...
A while.
Yeah, it's been a while. I know that was going down the rabbit hole a little bit, but...
And what's the cap? Do you know the cap?
There has not been a cap announced. It was previously $100,000. There is $2.9 million available. Municipalities that already receive this grants, which there's around 80 of them in the state, get first dibs at the grant funding.
So, we can put in...
I think there's a very good chance that you would get the funding if you were to apply for it.
Do you put in for an amount, or is there a set amount for...
No, we would put in an estimated amount based on projected tasks.
Based on what we're talking about, like, the first part, like, $20,000 gets you a decent, like, accessory dwelling, and it's not the others.
If we were solely to talk about accessory dwellings and modifications to that, that's a few thousand dollars. That's not a lot.
Not a lot, no.
I would like to do as much as we can using grant funds as possible. Can't do everything, but using grant funds, if there's stuff that needs to be updated, modified, to improve just functionality, let's do that. Has to be housing-related, but let's do that.
Okay.
I'd like to see, like, the zoning or the bylaws or whatever, that would allow more duplexes in town, you know?
I think that's actually a fairly low-hanging fruit for Newton, because you do already allow them...
Paying for your bucking is a very low impact.
Generally, yeah.
What do you think the dollar value should be that we should go for?
It would really have to depend on what we come up with. If it's just a bunch of small things, probably in that 10,000 to 20,000 is sufficient for doing a variety of smaller things. An inclusionary housing ordinance, just because of the level of outreach, not necessarily the ordinance itself, that's probably a $20,000 to $30,000 effort.
My personal opinion is it's not going to go over well.
It doesn't tend to go over well in many communities. It depends on how, what it's packaged.
Sorry, what were you calling that? The...
Inclusionary housing or workforce housing law?
The workforce.
Yeah, but, I mean, all you can do is try. And really, we're trying to set it up so that we're protecting ourselves from somebody coming in and just doing what they want.
I, yeah, I totally...
That is often a step that is hard for a lot of voters to wrap their head around.
I know, I know.
I'm just, yeah, based on...
But you can only do what you can do.
My 15 years here, one person took 10% of the fact, and then it goes on social media and...
Yeah. It roasted.
I will say, getting out ahead of the social media is really important for zoning changes.
Make our own YouTube channel.
I've, I've tried videos. I've tried TikTok. It's amazing what you have to do at this point.
Use my clout, my online clout to go viral.
I would love for Newton to go viral.
My work.
So, I guess we'll add that to an agendas in the coming future. So I guess we'll add that to an agendas in the coming future? Sure.
Would you like to put that on next?
The 25th? I probably won't be here.
Oh, okay.
You can, but I don't need to be here.
We can talk about it at more than one meeting, too. But let's definitely do it at the first one in July.
Is that?
I can tell you, I can tell you right now, there are no applications for the 25th.
June 25th.
Oh, perfect.
So the first July one is July 9th.
Which will probably be the next meeting. Is that what you're saying?
That's up to, I can't cancel that.
Yeah, right.
The chair does.
Going on.
I can only say that there are no public hearings scheduled for the 25th.
And that closes.
That already closed?
Oh, then, well, that, I guess we'll change the subject for a second. Do we want to have a meeting on the 25th?
There's a chance I won't be around.
I have another planning board meeting on the 25th.
The chair also has the prerogative to cancel a meeting.
Perfect.
So on July 9th, we're going to continue our housing grant discussion? Is that what I'm?
Can we make it homework?
I think you're perceiving that very well, John.
Maybe we can come up with some ideas of thoughts of what we want to change?
Please do.
I think we have an idea of some thoughts.
Write them down. That's my request.
Last on the agenda is our contract with Rockingham RPC. Apparently, we're.
The circuit rider contract came in. It's at the same terms as the last circuit rider contract. I would recommend that you move to sign it.
I'm assuming it fits within our budget?
Excuse me?
Does it fit within our budget?
I will say, you guys have been running a little bit, I will say, not short. You haven't been spending as much money as your contract via us, and that's partially because of the grant funds. So we're going to be working on Aquifer stuff over the summer and the fall because of grant funds and potentially housing stuff. So if you're short a little bit, I think the grant funds will help to cover some of my time.
I was just going to say, the grant, the grant money has been covering a lot of what will be a shortfall.
Somebody cut our budget this year quite a bit.
Really? Motion to approve the circuit rider contract.
Second.
Sorry.
Ms. White?
That hurt.
Aye.
Mr. Eddie?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Marshon?
Aye.
Mr. Papa Christus?
Aye.
And Mr. Moran?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
I understand why. Anything else? So next meeting, July 9th. Wow. I have nothing else. Meeting adjourned at 8:14?